Good evening and welcome to the July 20, 2023 meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. I'm Lee Cross and I'm going to ask everyone to please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Thank you to Alicia Pacer and everyone for setting up for the meeting tonight. I've called the meeting to order. Done the Pledge of Allegiance. A roll call yields trustee Hamel, trustee Musial, trustee Cross, trustee Ingram, and trustee Rail are here. I believe trustee Don Ratan is joining us by Zoom.
It was questionable whether or not she was going to be able to.
She's not here yet.
She's not.
I just want to make sure I have an accurate count. And I do believe trustee Smith Everett is on her way. With respect to awards and recognitions, I'm going to turn it over to our esteemed president, Dr. Andrew Bown.
All right. Well, thank you, Chair. I'd like to actually turn it over to Dr. McLeod, and he's got two new team members, well, two team members that he'd like to introduce and recognize.
Well, good evening. We'll start the meeting on a more fun note than we normally do during this, as I get an opportunity to introduce two folks who have come to us to help us continue the long tradition of good works at Johnson County Community College. And so I'll introduce our incoming chief academic officer, Dr. Gurbeshan Singh. Gurb has worked here for the last six years and has served as AVP of instructional services and has handled our curriculum. And he has successfully won the job and is now stepping in as our chief academic officer. And then Ms. Shelley Allen, who is coming to us from Des Moines Area Community College after a successful stint there to serve as our chief student affairs officer, and she will be heading up our student affairs branch and handling student success and engagement. Shelley has a long history of working with a multitude of issues across the Kansas City area, as she previously spent many years with Metropolitan Community College before moving on and taking some other roles across the state in St. Louis and then back into Iowa before returning home to us. So we welcome them both to their roles, and I know I thank them both for being willing to step into the breach.
Thank you. All right. Ready to go?
Thank you, and we want to congratulate Dr. McLeod on that great suit.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Next item on our agenda is the open forum section. This is my favorite part. The open forum section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes, please, unless a significant number of people plan to speak. In that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes in order to be recognized. Individuals must register at the door for each board meeting prior to the open forum agenda item. When addressing the board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium, should be respectful and civil, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel or student issues, or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion processes, or otherwise subject to review by the college board. I do not believe there are any registered speakers tonight, are there?
That's correct.
And so neither via Zoom. I'm missing something here.
Or in person.
You need to register the day before by 5:00 by Zoom, right?
That's correct.
In order to get a Zoom link. And then they need to be here 15 minutes prior at 4:45 PM Central Time in order to register to speak at the open forum section.
Correct. You are correct.
Is there anything I missed?
I don't think so.
I think everybody just tunes out, but.
No.
I think it's important. At any rate, we have nobody at the open forum to speak. The next item on our agenda is for board reports, and I'm going to ask our college lobbyist, Mr. Dick Carter, to please address this. The gentleman from Shawnee.
I think this is an all-time record for how fast things are moving, and because July is always the slowest month in the legislative process, I'm going to keep it moving even faster. I've got a couple of things to mention. And just to note in the report, 77 bills went into law on July 1. We're still dealing with fallout of some of those, and folks, agencies will continue to develop rules and regulations that mirror statutes that went into law on the beginning of the state's fiscal year. And the state ended the fiscal year on June 30 far stronger than anyone had anticipated, even after two adjustments upward, if you will, for what the state was expecting to receive. The state took in approximately $10.2 billion in revenues, and that leaves roughly a $3.5 to $4 billion ending balance. Part of that is a rainy day fund, about $1.65 billion. Never had a rainy day fund in the state of Kansas with that many dollars in it. The significant reason that there is such a surplus, if you will, is because no significant tax policy made its way through the final process this legislative session. Several bills were passed to the governor. She vetoed some. Others were allowed to become law. The legislature was not able to override some of the bills that were vetoed. So that leaves on the table a significant number of dollars that will become the discussion point for next year's budget as far as tax policy is concerned. We already know what some of those big issues are. The 4% cap on property valuation, which would be a constitutional amendment, which would mean a vote of the people in the 2024 elections. We'll be looking at all kinds of different components of property tax. There will be different iterations of tax policy for individual and corporate income tax next year. I think it's going to be everything on the board. There is money to spend, if you will, because of that and because of the ending balance. And I think we'll be also, you know, you never say never, we'll be watching to see if anything happens with revenue neutral rate, which is something that we've learned to work with now as budgets are being developed here at the college. Only significant thing that has occurred, and it just occurred this week, yesterday in fact, was the confirmation oversight committee met and reviewed the regents' appointments. There are two new ones. Alyssa Johnson, Johnston, rather, who retired as president of Fort Scott Community College will be confirmed as a new regent, as will Nylema and I, let's see here, Perasker, was also confirmed yesterday. Now, there was a reappointment of John Rolfe, and the committee did not take him up yesterday, and so that will happen at a different meeting at some point later on in the fall or summer. They will have to do something because presently John is the two-year running chair. He was tabbed to be chair again of the Board of Regents. So we'll continue to watch that process play out. The only other thing I would draw your attention to that's not contained in the report is at its regents' meeting this week, the board passed a, they created a window, if you will, for free application to state and public universities. And I mention that because they're going to start getting real competitive to see whatever they can do to attract students, to boost those numbers on those six state university campuses. But that also plays into everything that we watch and participate in as well. And I have a feeling that they're not done. I think they will continue to be creative in their attempt to continue to attract students at the state level. So I would stop there, Mr. Chair. I know that's brief, but sometimes that's good.
Less government's good.
Less talking is good.
Any questions for Mr. Carter, Mr. Trustee?
I just hope at some point, maybe Dick, you or somebody, somewhere, we could have a more in-depth discussion about the impact of the various property tax relief efforts that we hear about, because they all sound wonderful, but they all have very different impacts, both statewide and within Johnson County. A 4% cap on appraised values means we would have to raise the mill levy in order to create the same amount of money as we did this year. So it is, once again, an effort that happens in Topeka that impacts what this board will do going forward. A 4% cap means if there are new properties that go up higher than that or valued higher than that, there's an inequity built in to the process, because some neighborhoods will go up faster than others, but they will all be at 4%. So there are a lot of inequitable things that happen when you freeze property tax values or say they can only go up a certain percentage, and they affect real people in this county in a very important way and sometimes a very regressive way. So I'm just saying it's important for this board going forward to understand those, because it affects the mill levy. It doesn't arguably affect how much money we need at this college or how much we raise, but it's going to affect the mill levy if there's an artificial factor limiting the amount of property valuation that a county can find.
May I respond briefly?
Please do so.
I agree completely, and that is something that I will offer once we know a little bit better what some of those proposals are going to look like. The interim tax committee, I believe, has two meetings this fall, and they will be developing what those proposals look like. And even in the development stage, we can get a sense, but I will do my best to capture what we think the impact is. And we won't know, I mean, that group isn't even scheduled to meet yet, but hopefully later this fall they'll meet and we'll have a sense of what those proposals that they are going to present in their report to the legislature look like. And I will detail those out for this board so that they have a sense of what that looks like. It'll be after you have your budget hearing and adopt your budget for the coming year. But it will at least give you a sense of the direction they're going.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Trustee Smith Everett.
I just had a quick question, more of personal inquiry. Do you hear with this rainy day fund or with the 10.2, the prioritizing of K-12 fully-funded education, this bet? I didn't hear that in the list of priorities and implications.
Yeah, I think it's premature to pick what the winners are going to be.
Obviously.
Yet there are going to be so many entities going after those dollars, whether it's mental health, whether it's corrections. I think you'll see even more approach from higher ed, at least from the Board of Regents' perspective, as far as what they're asking. There are some true needs out there. There's also the opportunity to return some of those dollars that have been collected through tax policy that we'll, again, to trustee Musial's question, we'll see what that looks like as far as the proposals are concerned a little bit later this year. But it's a little bit too early to say just exactly. Child care is another big one. That is going to be a huge topic that we'll be talking about next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Carter? Trustee Ingram?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you just speak in general terms as to the appointment of Dr. Johnston and what you think about that?
Well, I think both the two new appointees are going to be great for this campus. One's right here, running a business in this community just down the street. I think we already work with her as far as students are concerned. That's going to be great to have someone from this community that knows this institution on that governing body. Even though they coordinate us, there's always conversations that like to go a little bit further. I think having a former community college president as a regent is also outstanding, because, again, they understand the network, they understand the system, they understand the student and the families that make up who comes to our colleges, so.
I know the appearance of that question would seem somewhat redundant, but I thought it was a really good time to speak to that, too, because it's extremely important, and it's something that I know KACC and the presidents, you know, have been working toward, just a greater voice with Kbor. So it's really exciting to know that this has occurred. So thank you.
Any other questions for the gentleman from Shawnee? I will say, Mr. Carter, thank you. I know, thank you to you, Senator Baumgartner, all of our delegation. I think we had a pretty strong year with the legislature this year, so thank you for everything that this government and legislature were able to do for us. So thank you.
You're welcome.
The next item on our agenda is the Faculty Association report, and I believe pitch, pinch hitting for Andrea View is Amanda Glass.
Yes, I was going to say, I do not indeed look like Andrea View, so go there.
No, no, thank you for being here.
I was going to pretend, but I couldn't. Hello, I'm Dr. Amanda Glass, Associate Professor of Chemistry and the current Vice President for the Faculty Association. It is my joy to update you on some of the happenings with JCCC faculty over the past few months. I first wanted to start with welcoming, but, you know, Nikki took away some of my thunder. But we want to wish a congratulations to Dr. Gurbeshan Singh and a welcome to Dr. Sheri Allen as they start in their new positions. And we would also like to officially welcome Marquis Harris as the new executive director for inclusion and belonging at JCCC. I'm excited to get to work, and I'm glad he brings his wealth of knowledge and experience to our college campus. Now, on happenings that have been going on with us. Professor Teri Easley-Heraldo has been working with the League of Women Voters on the Board of Trustee Candidate Forum. This will be held at the Polsky Theater of the Midwest Trust Center on Monday, August 28 at 7:00 PM. So they moved it away from a smaller space into the bigger space in the Midwest Trust Center to be more inclusive and to hope even more people come to that important forum. So I wanted to make sure everybody has that on their calendars. Last week, I returned from Orlando, Florida, where I represented the JCCC Faculty Association, higher ed in general, and the Kansas NEA at the largest convening of the National Education Association for our Representative Assembly. When in session, we are the largest governing body in the world, and we had nearly 7,000 union educators in attendance. Lots of community was built, and inspiration happened. Meeting in Orlando, Florida was not an easy thing to do. Many queer educators didn't feel safe, so they made the decision not to come. And in a move of solidarity, we built little free libraries for Florida educators to fill with banned and contested books. In late June, JCCC hosted the Face-to-Face Assessment by Design workshop led by our former director of AEIO, Dr. Sheri Barrett, and co-facilitated by Professor Ashley Rader and myself. We went through Dr. Barrett's textbook, Assessment by Design, with lots of examples and constituents from four-year schools, local and regional community colleges, and student affairs and co-curricular folks. There was also an online three-week version administered through Canvas. In total, 51 educators from 19 institutions and an educational resource organization participated in the two workshops that we hosted. Other news, a subcommittee of the Faculty Association submitted a proposal to the Kansas NEA entitled "Rebranding, Recruitment, and Membership Engagement," JCCCFA, and we received word in early June that our proposal is partially funded. We will keep you updated as we continue to work on rebranding. So one of the things is we want to get a new logo, so we're launching a member thing to get a new logo built. So we'll keep you updated on that. I'm a chemist. I said that right? I think I did. Finishing touches from the contractors and college staff are being completed in science now. Biology faculty will start moving from their swing spaces after the summer semester ends next week. We're approaching Week 8 for the summer semester. People are tired and excited. I told Dr. McLeod that the smell of sweat is strong in my lab right now. We're working through it. We can do this. The building in science looks great, and they are excited to move into their spaces for the fall semester. The functionality, equipment updates, and layout of the labs will greatly enhance student engagement and success. And in terms of events, there will be an open house for both buildings focused on inviting community members. There's a tentative date set, but more information, I think from maybe Kate, will be coming soon. Heather Sights from Micro and Melanie Harvey from Chemistry have an NSF-funded grant that launched with a successful virtual conference attended by more than 100 faculty from over 70 different institutions, highlighting the leadership JCCC is having in the community college CURE development space. Now, CURE stands for Course-Based Undergraduate Research Experience. This is an equitable practice that puts authentic research in a course that a student already has to take, so they don't have to opt to take another class or to pay more money for dollars. I might be one of the 15 people that I'm going to talk about in a second. I lost my place in my notes. The overarching goals are to have 15 new CURE projects on the JCCC campus and to develop expertise and leadership in CURE development at community colleges nationally, but that grant is focused on projects here at JCCC. And so we had an open conference that had people from all over the country that participated in May, but in a couple of weeks here at JCCC, we'll have our first JCCC people doing the development workshop. Update from faculty development, there are four faculty fellows going into the fall semester. The two continuing fellows are Megan Doyle in College Success and Ted Rollins in English. And then there's two new fellows, Scott Gilmore in Construction Management and Faith Jacobson in Chemistry. The faculty fellows will be leaders in the revised new faculty orientation, which is replacing the old, what was called LENS program. It's important to note that that is faculty involvement in that training process, so there was some concern voiced about that, and faculty here are involved directly in that process. The fellows will also assist in the development and implementation of faculty development programming, such as the BIG, Borrow, and Steal program. Looking forward, we're excited for the employee picnic. I shared with Dr. Bown, my husband's name's also Andy, and I'm terrified every time I go to email him, I'm going to email the wrong Andy. So when I think about the picnic, I think of that interaction. Also, my son, it's fun to tell stories about oneself when you're in front of a microphone. My son was not super polite when Dr. Bown was so nice to him, and I said, "Hon, do you know who that was?" And he's like, "I read president." So it wasn't even worth it. I was like, "So when you read president, you should probably, like, be on good behavior." But apparently, I'm raising the next generation of troublemakers. He had been over-sugared that night. But we're excited about the employee picnic. It's Friday, September 8, 5:00 to 8:00 PM in the Comm Courtyard. There'll probably be a call soon for volunteers, but importantly, the RSVP for that, which includes free food and fun community activities, is August 16. There's a Google form that is accessible via Info Hub. And speaking of parties, because they're fun, the Faculty Association will be having its back-to-school party on Friday, August 18. So that's the Friday of PLD Week at the Quivera Falls Clubhouse again. All constituents are invited, including families. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Professor Glass. Any questions for Professor Glass?
I'll.
Go ahead.
I'll make two brief comments. One, I also am raising the next generation of troublemakers, so I'm right there with you in solidarity. And thank you for all the detailed parts about things like fellows. Sometimes we gloss over those, and we've heard the terms, but being reminded of what that means and the level of involvement you all have in, of course, this next couple of years, we're going to be hiring a lot of new folks to replace the tremendous people that have made it to that retirement finish line, and thank you for that level of detail. So.
Thank you. It's a joy to get to brag on what my awesome colleagues are doing.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I will say, I have a seven-year-old who questions everything, and I have no idea where he got it.
[laughing]
And then, from a union family, and I helped, I was the first Canvas director hired by Working America, a community affiliate of the AFL-CIO. So I thank you for your involvement in these unions. I'm a giant believer in the freedom of assembly, whether it's government, church, or a union. I commend you for your leadership. And the faculty's been a big supporter of mine and me there. You said your lab smelled like sweat, and I'll tell you, I think it was David Hardy at Chick-Ardian Bacon who coined the phrase that the law is 10% inspiration and 90% perspiration. So thank you for your work that you do for our students. And Dr. Bown just doesn't tell us stuff. I didn't know about the picnic on the 16th, so.
We knew about the picnic.
It's a joke, trustee Musial. I wanted to ask you if I may.
There's a picnic the week before, too, just for the rest of the trustees.
The JCCC listserv, what are your thoughts on that generally? How does it impact what you do?
It's funny, because I asked Andrea about, like, if that's something that I should talk about, because it's something people have been. I think it's, I'm a community person, and I think it's great for community building. I know some people get overwhelmed by the inundation by stuff, but it's really great to learn rules about an email inbox, right? So you put a folder in, and you build a rule, and you can look at it. But I do think that the listserv hopes, it's not just a puppy list. I mean, it can be that, too. But I think it's somebody today, Mary Hanover, I think, compiled, like, what things other than I'm selling, which I may have sold three things today on the list. So that's probably not what you were asking about, but I'll just be honest. But the community building, like, I remember somebody had a sick partner, and there was funds raised for that, like a, what's it called? GoFundMe account and stuff. So my general feeling of it is it serves a very useful purpose in helping to build community in this space, which, as a community college, I think that's really important.
I thank you. Any other questions for Professor Glass?
Thank you.
Sorry to keep you, but thank you. The next item on our agenda is a report for the Johnson County Education Research Triangle by trustee Musial.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Johnson County Education Research Triangle was created through funding passed by the Johnson County voters in 2008, a 1.8 cent sales tax goes to the three legs of the stool, the KU Cancer Clinic, the KU Edwards Campus, and the K-State Olathe Campus. Over, through June of 2023, we are 6% over what June of 2022 was, and 13.5% over the year up to that date for 2022. As I mentioned before, a lot of that is based on inflation, and when prices go up, your sales tax goes up as well. The 6% indicates that, to me, inflation has moderated somewhat, and that's probably why that number is lower. It's been in the double digits, I think, for the last 10 or 12 months. So that's my report.
As an amateur economist, yes, it's down around two or three, actually, year to date. So thank you, Mr. Trustee, for that report. Any questions for trustee Musial on JCERT? Thank you, trustee Musial. The next item on our agenda is a report for the Community College Foundation, and I believe trustee Smith Everett will deliver that.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I was attending to trustee Ingram's iPad. Okay. So you all will not believe this, but we are having a gala for the foundation. It's coming up. Did you know that? November, November 11. So I hope everyone has it on the calendar, but we want to make sure everybody remembers this is the major event for the foundation each year, and it'll be in November 11. And we have a full committee meeting on August 8 to meet and greet with our Johnson County In of the Year and his wife, Dr. Roy Jensen. So we are excited about that. Also, sponsorship is still available, so you can go on to jccc.edu/c21023 to grab your table. The newly-appointed executive committees of the foundation met on July 11. The new officers are Jeff Alpert, who is the new president, Tim McKee is president-elect with Marshaun Butler, serving as our immediate past president, Leo Nunick.
Nunick.
Nunick. I was like, I know I'm going to say it wrong. Tracy Osborne.
Holchen.
I'm not going to say her other name.
Holchen.
Holchen.
It's okay.
I should have practiced the names before. I didn't realize that trustee Ratan wasn't going to brutalize this. And Sean, I thought it was Khan, but this is not Say Khan. And Mike Bohm, know that one, our at-large positions. The Harvest Dinner is scheduled for August 25 from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, and unfortunately, tickets are all sold out. So if you didn't grab those, they're already gone, but this is one of the biggest events with our sustainability, and we love supporting them. The Nerman Museum is having a celebration on September 9 from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. We will celebrate 30 years of art on the JCCC campus by hosting a fundraiser to support the Nerman Museum. So save the date. Sponsorships and tickets are available at nermanmuseum.org, and it's called Museum Celebration Wildlife. And then finally, the foundation funding transfers to the college are nearly $2 million this year, which is following the major transfers made for the CDL facility. So we appreciate the foundation's partnership in that. We thank them greatly for all the ways that they support our students and the work we do here at JCCC. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Trustee. Any questions for trustee Smith Everett on the foundation? Seeing none, thank you, trustee Smith Everett. Seeing none, thank you, Trustee Smith Everett. The next item on our agenda is the College Council Report, and Dr. Andrew Bound will be delivering that report.
Right. Well, Jason Arnett was, is traveling this week and was not able to lead the meeting yesterday, so they were stuck with me, as my kids would say. "You're stuck with me, I'll play along with you." Anyways, we, during the meeting, received updates from the various councils across campus. We welcome Caitlin Crumsek to, she is now the chair of the Staff Council, and so she has joined the College Council, given her capacity with Staff Council. We discussed preliminary recommendations from the Academic Integrity Subcommittee of the Academic Branch Council. They received an update from the Communications Subcommittee. There was discussion about the listserv sunset, which you heard earlier a few minutes ago. And then we discussed the 23-24 meeting schedule and set that for the year. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Bound on the College Council? Seeing none, Trustee Ingram has brought it to my attention that I skipped the Kansas Association of Community Colleges, and so I turn it over to the immediate past president of the Kansas Association of Community Colleges, Trustee.
I have no report. No, I'm just kidding. I apologize to our viewers. Forgive me. I don't know where that came from, except that we're up here and he's overlooked me twice. So anyway, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the recognition. I do have a very short report in keeping with the theme that Mr. Carter began with this evening, and we are very excited about our former president at Fort Scott Community College. So I do want to make that really, really clear to everyone, and I appreciate Mr. Carter's recognition of that and his explanation of that, too, because it is something that we have longed for, is just a greater voice. And I made that clear earlier, but I want to reiterate that. The other thing is, we do have a new president just recently named at Fort Scott, Dr. Jason Kegler, who will be announced and introduced, I guess is a better term, when we have our next meeting at Cloud County Community College. That is on August the 25th and the 26th, and that does conclude my report. Thank you.
Well, I thank you. And I just, any questions for Trustee Ingram? Trustee Smith Everett?
Is it possible to get the list of locations where KACC is meeting for the year, or is that decided? How far out is that decided? I've always thought I should visit some of the other ones. You know, when they come here, of course, we all try to be present.
Right, right.
But is that possible? Like, can we get it quarterly, or even we just able to glance at the locations where these?
Sure, sure. It will be at Cloud County next month, on the 25th and the 26th. And I don't know the date off the top of my head for the last one of the year, but it is in Seward County, which is far southwest.
Yeah.
But you're welcome to arrive.
I mean, that's why I'm asking, because obviously those I wouldn't try to go to.
No, 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 absolutely. And that's, we try to get that.
Fort Scott.
We do try to announce, you know, in advance, once we've had our meeting, where the next one is, so that you've got it. I don't know how often it is decided upon, but it, because it really does come from the presidents and those who would like to host.
Okay. I thought maybe it was planned out a little bit further than that.
I believe it's the first and second of December. I think it's that first weekend of December.
Yeah, I just don't have it off the top of my head.
That's at Seward?
At Seward, yes.
Do you have anything else?
Nope.
I went to the Seward one in 2016. Dr. Cook couldn't make it, so I went. And it's only six hours. What was the first time I overlooked you? You said twice.
Do what?
What was the first time I overlooked you?
Keep them. It was Foundation and College Council, those two.
Oh. Oh, I see what you're saying. I re, okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Trustee. The next item on our agenda is the Committee Reports and Recommendations, and first up is the Board Governance Committee and Trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the Board Governance Committee reviewed the recommendation changes to the Code of Ethics Policy 114.02 on May 3rd. The recommended changes align with the Code of Ethics Policy 114.02 and the Conflict of Interest Policy 431.00, specifically through the addition of Section 3 and 4. So it is a recommendation of the Board Governance Committee that the Board of Trustees approve. The modifications to the Code of Ethics Policy 114.02 are shown subsequently in the board packet on page 1.
Second.
And I will make that motion, sorry.
The motion has been moved by Trustee Smith Everett and seconded by Trustee Muzel. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Trustee Ingram.
Yes. I've been looking over this, and I reviewed it several times, but I just had reached out to Trustee Smith Everett and asked the question, "I would like just a clarification on why some of the JCC employees are listed under our Code of Ethics Policy."
I could not remember, but I remember we brought it up, and you had a very eloquent answer for why we needed to list some of our cabinet under our Code of Ethics. And it has to do with them being designated officers, but I, that's where I'm going to stop talking.
That's correct. And I don't know the history as to how that came about, but I will say those designated officers fill out the same disclosure forms that the board does. And so perhaps whoever drafted the policy initially felt that it made the most sense to do it once in that one policy.
And your recommendation to continue that, then?
I think that makes sense.
Okay, okay. And I'm not, you know, this was just simply a question as I was reviewing it, trying to make sure that I was understanding of it. It's not anything new, you know, so I want to remind people of that, too. I just wanted that clarification. So thank you very much.
Trustee Muzel.
I brought it up at the Board Governance Committee when we first saw this, before it went through some other committees, and before it went through the review to apply to all employees. And the goal of this was to make sure our Conflict of Interest policy and Code of Ethics meshed with that, that other college employees are obligated to comply with. I do want to bring up, and I brought up in the committee, I think there is a little bit of a difference between board members as to perceived or potential conflicts of interest, because we are out in the community, we know, we by nature know a lot of people, we deal with people on behalf of the college. I just want to warn, I guess, alert the board going forward, since I will not be here come January, not to be too broad and expansive about applying perceived and potential to situations where I simply know somebody, but I'm a board member, and that's perceived as a conflict of interest, because it will eliminate a board member from discussions that might be important, and to some extent, it assumes relationships automatically turn into policy, which is not true. So I just think going forward, that was my caution at the Board Committee meeting, Board Governance Committee meeting, I wanted to bring it up here again tonight. I seconded the motion, I'll support the policy. It's how this board and individual trustees apply that that will be important in the future. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions for Trustee Smith Everett? I think I'll ask Trustee Smith Everett Muzel. I mean, how does this policy compare with what other organizations use, like, say, the United States Supreme Court with respect to an ethics policy or conflicts of interest?
Well, I think ours is more robust than, I'm so sorry, Mr. President, Chairman. I don't know at that high a level, but generally, every local governing body has something similar, where we are held to a rule, a series of guidelines and rules that we agree, we obey by to protect both the college and ourselves from trying to make any policy by the influence of any other group, organization, or people we know.
In other words, we choose in self-governing to abide by our own Code of Ethics that we adopt?
And I think, you know, part of this board governance idea, and putting it in our infrastructure, is to bring it up in a regular fashion so that it reminds all of us that we are in very unique roles. We are out in the community, we are serving as ambassadors, but we also each have our own careers, which can bring about relationships and networks of people that can be perceived. But we also, you know, have to make a living and are serving this role. And so by regularly reviewing these policies, it just reminds each of us that we've got to be really careful about how we do our work, and we've committed ourselves to this code.
Thank you for that.
I might add, in response to that question, Mr. Chair, that this, the state laws, I understand that on conflict of interest is simply that we have to disclose if we have a substantial interest, which means we receive more than $2,000 in compensation or value from any one source, that might, we disclose that in our substantial disclosure forms, and we would have to disclose it when we vote on something, but it doesn't require disqualification or recusal. So this is a stricter policy, and I think particularly makes sense when there's a direct conflict of interest. If my partner or spouse is involved in a business that's in front of the college, then I should recuse myself, because that is direct. My earlier comments certainly weren't intended to undermine that kind of integrity that we've always practiced here in my 12 years.
No, I appreciate that. I was perhaps being goofy, but thank you for entertaining. Any other questions, comments, before we vote? Discussion. The motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is the Employee Engagement and Development Committee, and Trustee Hamel will be delivering that report.
Thank you, Chair Cross. The Employee Engagement and Development Committee met at 10:00 a.m. right here in the boardroom on Thursday, July 9th, or July 6th, sorry about that. We reviewed a few different policies. Colleen Chandler, the Vice President of Human Resources, presented JCC's policy review and approval process. The following personal policies with modifications were presented for volunteer policy, nepotism policy, and conflict of interest policy. And it is the recommendation of the Employee Engagement Development Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve modifications to the volunteer policy, nepotism policy, and conflict of interest policy, as shown in the packet.
I'll second.
The motion has been.
Make that the motion.
Motion.
Was there a motion?
Yes.
Okay, very good. The motion's been moved by Trustee Hamel and seconded by Trustee Ingram. Any discussion now? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes?
Yes.
And those opposed, no. In the opinion of the chair, the motion passes unanimously. So you just took them all in one?
Yeah, all three, yes.
Very good. Anything further?
Yeah, I got a couple more. We also discussed the voluntary employment retirement benefit update. This is basically around verb. Ms. Chandler provided an update with the total number of employees that took advantage of it. 69 employees have retired or given notice to intend to retire effective July 1st. Ms. Chandler also provided an update on the status of filing for those 69 positions. The total payout for those employees is $2 million, or sorry, yeah, $2,146,419.78. We also talked about the job architecture project that's everybody's concerned about, obviously. Phase 2 of the job is where we're working right now. That's our job matching and leveling are the focus. Campus leaders have been asked to provide position data, questionnaires, the PDQs for non-bargaining unit staff positions to document the primary duties and responsibility of each job. After the final review, the PDQs by Human Resources and Cabinet. The position reviewers meet with Culpeper and Associates to discuss the PDQs for jobs in these areas. HR continues to host sessions twice per week through July, open to anyone with questions about this part of the project. Last part.
Any questions for Trustee Hamel? Trustee Rea.
At the risk of sounding like a broken record, I just want to reiterate, and I've said this at earlier board meetings, that we discussed at the Employee Engagement meeting as well, the importance of really monitoring the project, the process of this job architecture project to make sure that it's accomplishing the goals that we want to accomplish, to make sure that we're not moving too quickly, to make sure that our third-party vendor is really serving the needs that we need to have served. And to that end, I think we're going to have an audience with Culpeper at the next committee meeting to sort of get from the horse's mouth, if you will, how things are going and what their vision is for the project. And I think that'll be helpful as we continue to monitor the progress.
Thank you for that. Anything else for Trustee Hamel? Questions, comments? Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the report of the Management and Finance Committee and the voluminous report by the man, the myth, and the legend, Trustee Muzel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Management and Finance Committee met at 8:30 a.m. on Thursday, July 6th. The information can be found on pages 19 through 47 of the board packet. On just some reports that we received, we received a semi-annual report from Sandra Warner, the Executive Director of Mission Continuity and Risk Management, on the activities of the mission continuity. It ensures disaster recovery and continuity plans are in place to sustain our academic and administrative functions throughout adversity. We traditionally have talked about that in terms of a tornado or some natural disaster, but it also includes cyber attacks and other more modern ways that somebody could mess up our mission. An overview of the annual property insurance renewal process was also presented, which we will act on later. We received, we did an appraisal of all the property, personal and real property on campus. That appraisal updated the values and resulted in a larger value, which meant our insurance premium is going up, plus the insurance industry is in a little bit of a state of flux. So we'll see procurement issue later with a higher premium for our property insurance. We also received an information technology report from Rob Caffey, Vice President for Information Services and Chief Information Officer. This is a quarterly update on information service activities. He reviewed the annual information technology planning process and gave an update on various projects. As we, I think we all know, information services is involved in every project we do, whether it's active learning classrooms, or the science lab renovation, or anything else. They play a role in that. And the first floor of the GEB, as you walk in, we see what's going on there that information services is highly involved in. Any, including an overview of the threat landscape and cybersecurity challenges that are faced every day on campus. Tom Hall, our Associate Vice President for Campus Services and Facility Planning, provided an update on the various facility projects listed on the capital expenditures and improvement matrix, which you see in your packet. Everybody gets that. It's a good update on every major project that we have funded through our capital improvement projects, and that included the Science Building, which we heard from the Faculty Association presentation, is getting close to done for the chemistry and other science areas, and the first floor of this building. We have a number of recommendations, and the first one I'm going to take is on the Commercial Drivers License Project. Alyssa Waldman, Vice President for Workforce Development and Continuing Ed, presented information on the CDL driving range, which we've been working on now for 18 months to try to expand the amount of CDL students that we can have and CDLs that can be issued, and it's a change to the initially approved budget. Tom Hall also explained the design-build aspect of the project, and later we'll have a procurement for the design-bid, design-build project lead. Highly summarized, the site design work for the Commercial Drivers License range was underestimated, not fully estimated at the time. We had an initial $5 million budget, and we need to add $1,888,127 to that budget. That's going to be added through one-time state funding that was received this year for apprenticeships and other programming. That brings the total budget for the project to $6,965,131. As you'll recall, the state offered $2.5 million for this, and we received a private grant from the Sunderland Foundation, I believe, for $2 million, and we received, and we included another $500,000 from the CDL Reserve Fund, which got us to the initial $5 million. But it is a recommendation of the Board of Trustees, recommendation that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the revised total budget of $6,965,131 for the CDL driving range project to be financed, as indicated in your packet on page 20, and I would so move.
Second. Motion has been made by Trustee Muzel and seconded by Trustee Cross. Any discussion? Trustee Smith Everett?
I just wanted to ask, I think it's important for it to be transparent, why we, where the error was in our miscalculation, and just have that out in the public so we know why it is that we're having to revise. it is that we're having to revise it. I mean, it's very rare that we have this much of a revision to a budget, and so if we could have that clarification.
All right. I will take a stab at that, and Rachel, if you will correct anything I say if it's not accurate, if I missed something. The practical reality is, on one hand, there are complexities to the style of project that's different than when you build here, right? We already own the property, we know what we're doing. The way we work, whether it's a construction manager, risk project, or so forth, we've had ways that we do things historically here on campus, being an off-site location. And the way this project proceeded had some complications to it that made estimating it complicated. Having said that, it was an error that we made in not fully vetting the estimate of the site plan work. And so that's the answer.
Okay. I just want to say publicly, if we were any other institution, this may be a break-it scenario. I mean, the fact that we are able to compensate for $1.8 million shortfall is incredibly lucky. We're very blessed. We're very fortunate at JCC, which we all know, and I just want to state that because I think when you are as fortunate as we are, and our taxpayers have supported us, and we've certainly gotten a lot of positive attention for this CDL, we have to recognize that that's not the case for everyone, and we are grateful for the ability to be able to recover this and still move on and pursue this project. So that concludes my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Trustee. Any other questions, comments on this issue?
I guess.
Trustee Ingram.
I would ask the one question, or maybe ask for further transparency. We received how much from this one-time state funding, as you're referring to?
So we received approximately $2.9 million in one-time state funding.
Okay.
That is for apprenticeships and other forms of workforce development that allow community colleges to respond to needs identified in the community. And so it is aligned to the use of that funds, but spending this money for this project means you can't spend it for something else, right? It's, once you've spent it, it's gone.
And will we have to report that as a part of this state funding?
That hasn't been clarified yet, the reporting requirements. We'll have all the records if...
Oh, sure, sure.
We're sort of doing it now. We're telling the world now.
Right, right. But since those are state dollars, I wondered if we had to report back to them how they were actually spent.
State, we're spending the money now.
That's your public...
That's what?
That's his public transparency.
Thank you. Okay, I appreciate it. And I think, you know, you mentioned that we were very fortunate, and I think that's what I would agree to, is we're extremely fortunate that we have that option. So, thank you.
Before we vote, I just, this CDL project is a fantastic project.
Absolutely.
At both prices. It's very frustrating that we didn't do as good a due diligence upfront as I think we could have, but if we had known this cost upfront, I think we still would have done the project, and I think the state still would have found it a valuable project. So from that standpoint, I'm going to support this because I think the CDL project is so important. I think the points that have been made that we will do a better job in the future because everybody now is alerted.
And just to clarify, I'm not trying to criticize anyone here. I want clarification for the public's sake when they say $1.8 million. How could you get that wrong? I want to have an answer for that and hear the answer and know that it was publicly discussed. And then I also want to recognize that not every institution could recover from this as easily and quickly as we are, and I'm grateful that we are, but we sometimes just have to say those things out loud because people say I'm in the shadows and just needs to be put out there.
Thank you.
Well, I get accused of standing in front of Dr. Bound too many times, but when something's a win for labor and industry, I'm going to do it. You can blame me as much as anybody. My zest and zeal for this project, and I agree with Trustee Muzel in that this is a good idea. We're talking about Johnson County real estate, we're talking about building things in Johnson County in a time when the supply chain is recovering, which by the way, was one of the impetus for this project, was that there were problems in the supply chain, we need new drivers. So I appreciate the transparency, candor, and disclosure at this point of the, it was a surprise, it was frustrating, I'm not going to say it wasn't, but I commend the administration for owning the reality. I'll say, and I know many people in this county have, my wife and I are remodeling a home, and there's just unexpected costs when you tear into real estate. It's just real. So I'm not shocked. I think that this was all done in good faith, and I commend the administration for bringing it to our attention. And it is the governing of this board and this administration and previous, our predecessors that were in such good shape to do that, in the good faith of the people of Johnson County. So I think everyone is to blame and everyone's to be credited, and I love talking out of both sides of my mouth. So any other questions?
It might be helpful because, I think we all know this because we've seen the reports and heard it before, but enrollment in fiscal year '23 was 280 students, and at full capacity, because of this project, will go to 656. So it's more than double the number of CDL drivers that we will turn out, and that's why, that's the basis for my earlier comments, that I would have supported this at either level, and I think it's something we have to do and we need to do.
We've had a number of custody cases, by the way, and truck drivers are a huge payer of child support, so this is great. I will support it. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. In the opinion of the chair, the motion passes unanimously. Trustee Muzel.
We have a number of policy revisions, which are part of the rotation that Ms. Nazar's office does and each department does to review our policies. There are seven different policies found on page 21 of the board packet. I'm going to offer a motion to take six of those at once, knowing that one other one is a trustee has indicated he would like to discuss. We have three purchasing policies, really. Purchasing Policy 215.01, to clean up some of the language and add an applicability and purpose statement. Competitive Solicitation Requirements Policy 215.02, and it changes, moves the option to purchase goods and services using cooperative contracts from the Purchasing Exceptions Policy to the Competitive Solicitation Policy. You all remember that sometimes we get bids and they're not actually bid, but somebody at a larger level has volume bid those at the state level or some other level, and we take advantage of that competitive bid process, and that is what is dealt with by 215.02. Purchasing Exceptions to Competitive Solicitation Policy 215.04 increases the reporting threshold from $35,000 to $50,000 to be consistent with other procurement policies. Report means it comes to the board, and then at certain levels, the board has to act on it. Obviously, we have opportunities to ask about any purchasing issues that come up. Contract Approval and Signatory Authority Policies 215.05 is to, changes to add an applicability statement and clean up some of the language used in the policy, no substantive changes. Our Safety and Security Policy 610.00 has recommended changes for applicability and purpose statement and clean up some language. And then the last one I'll move jointly is the National Incident Management System Policy 620.00, again, to add applicability and purpose statement and clean up the language. We are trying to make every policy have an applicability statement and a purpose statement, so each of these, when they come through, if they don't have those, we add that. I would move to approve those six policies I just identified. Everything on page 21 except the Infectious Disease Policy 611.00.
All right, and just to be clear, thank you, Mr. Trustee, and to give a heads-up here to someone, infectious disease policy 611, we're going to discuss and address later. It's the first six, not including 611, right?
Correct.
I'll second.
Motion's been moved by Trustee Muzel and seconded by Trustee Ingram. Any discussion? To these six policies. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes?
Yes.
And opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously for those six. Trustee Muzel.
Policy 611.00 is the infectious disease policy. There are changes in that of a various form, primarily stylistic changes, although there is one change which is substantive. This is a response to what we have learned, I think, through the pandemic, and to address future issues with respect to infectious diseases in the community on campus. One of the changes is to include among the lists of entities that we will receive information from, we have added the World Health Organization, as well as identifying the Johnson County Department of Health and Environment. And with, the other changes, I believe, are mostly in the form of reporting and consistency with our mission continuity plan. So I would move the modifications as contained in the board packet on page 37 through 39 to Policy Number 611.00.
Second.
Motion's been moved by Trustee Muzel and seconded by Trustee Smith Everett. I know Trustee Hamel has some questions, concerns here, I'm going to go to him first.
Basically, thank you. My concern or question is around local control, and I'd really like to leave out the World Health Organization and continue focusing on Johnson County, our state, and CDC nationally. So I'd like to remove the World Health Organization from this list.
Does the trustee wish to amend his motion, or do we have a second to the amendment?
Are you moving an amendment?
I'm moving, yeah. I'm moving. I move.
He's moved to amend this to strike World Health Organization.
Just that, yeah.
I don't see or hear a second, Mr. Trustee. I will ask, why are we including the World Health Organization? I don't oppose, I could guess, but I'm a grandstander, so I thought I'd ask.
I think it was just identified as a best practice to add the World Health Organization in addition to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, the Centers for Disease Control, and the Johnson County Department of Health and Environment as an agency we might look to for guidance in identifying an infectious disease.
And we had COVID during both the previous administration and this administration, right?
Correct.
Yes.
How many students do we have die of COVID? Do we know?
Not to our knowledge.
I don't think we keep track of that.
Do we have any faculty members die?
Not to our knowledge.
Did any employees die?
Those are, I don't think, I mean, even if we know, I don't know that that's shareable from this entity.
Well, that's relevant. I'm just suggesting we do a job here, and nobody died, to my knowledge. So I'm going to support the motion as a matter of discussion here. Any other discussion?
I understand, I understand Trustee Hamel's concern about that. There have been lots of concerns raised about lots of agencies by lots of people about whether science is science anymore. This doesn't bind us to anything except to look to another organization, which still has scientific credibility worldwide for information about infectious disease and the potential spread. It doesn't, we're not bound to do anything the World Health Organization says or to accept their science, any more than we're bound to accept the science of the CDC. I think we should probably, if it happens, but this is just another resource for the college, and that's why I support the motion.
I concur. Trustee Ingram.
And that's really, I agree with you, Greg, or Trustee Muzel, excuse me, but I guess the words "maybe" were the reason that I would support it, just thinking that that might be something that we would be considering, but it's not specific and it's not a have-to situation. It does give us some flexibility, and so that's why I will support it.
What do you see "maybe"? Sorry.
And others, as "may be identified by"? As "may be identified".
Yeah, we're just, we're just working to give our staff the flexibility to reference all these sources to see, right?
Yes.
So we're not, it's not like we're listening to the World Health Organization exactly, although I think we'd be well-served to do that. But that's, I mean, it's my understanding that the WHO is somebody who's also providing information to the United States. The United States government can do whatever they want, the state of Kansas government can do whatever it wants, and the Johnson County Department of Health can also do whatever it wants, but it just references those organizations for information, right?
Yes. Well, that was my interpretation.
And so, one last thought and clarification, and I totally get where everybody's coming from, and honestly, collecting more information is better than having none or less. I get that to an extent. My thought is, though, between each one of those counties, state, or nation, that they should be able to filter those things better than we would be able to understand and interpret that data for the world. Again, they would be the experts, and I don't think that we are at the same time. We obviously want to see what's going on, but I would rather have that filtered down to us through those three organizations than another one internationally. And if those three all say, let's not take action, I don't recognize, and one does, I would rather go with those three, and I think somehow those three would get us the information we would need, is what my point is.
I understand. Trustee Reel.
Yeah, I just want to add, and thank you, Trustee Muzel, for clarifying what I believed to be the case, which is there's nothing in this policy that requires us to do anything as a result of anything that the World Health Organization may say. I think if we learned nothing else from COVID, we learned how quickly something that seems relatively benign in another country can become incredibly harmful right here in our own country. And certainly, to the extent that the World Health Organization might be on the forefront of something we should know about, I just think it's an incredibly valuable source of information. And then what we do with that information is still up to us. And so I concur with what everyone else has said in that regard.
I will say, thank you. Is there anything else?
No.
I will say, and I think, please just follow my logic, I believe we finished the spring of 2000. Didn't we finish it online and remotely for our students?
Yes.
The spring of 2020, excuse me. And I'm immensely proud of that, frustrated with the Shawnee Mission School District that we didn't finish. So our administration, Dr. Weber, Dr. McLeod, everyone involved, finished, and we conducted business at a time, we were innovative and finished, when other school districts were struggling with what to do. And so I commend this administration for always reaching out and finding new information, as Trustee Reel said, to help guide and govern us through what was really an unprecedented time, in fairness to Shawnee Mission and other school districts. But I'm proud that we did that. I haven't decided if I'll run in two years, but that's something I will run on in two years, should I decide to. And I understand Trustee Hamel's concerns. Like, I wouldn't trust China. Don't listen to them. But WHO, if anything, WHO actually is a trial lawyer, a plaintiff's trial lawyer, is actually sometimes regarded as industry-controlled. So it's interesting, the different perspectives on the organization, so. Trustee Ingram. You're telling me to move on? No, I just, the motion has been called to question. All those in favor, did we vote on this?
Yeah.
Excuse me. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes five to one.
The next item on our agenda is the design-build project or design-build RFP for the commercial driver's license range that we talked about earlier. It is a recommendation to award that to the J.E. Dunn Construction Company for $5,841,156. There were six different bidders. One was non-responsive, and the five other ones, it was a qualifications request, not a bid, so it is not the low bid, although it is in the range of the other, four of the other five bids. So I would, it's a recommendation of Management and Finance that the board accept the recommendation of college administration to approve J.E. Dunn Construction for design-build services for JCC's CDL training facility in the amount of $5,841,000, $5,841,156, with an additional 10% contingency of $148,623 on the building portion only, to allow for possible unforeseen costs for a total estimated expenditure of $5,989,779, and I would so move.
Second.
Motion has been made by Trustee Muzel and seconded by Trustee Hamel. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Trustee Muesel.
The next item is a multi-year purchase of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more for housekeeping services to establish a contract in various campus buildings, a number of campus buildings representing approximately three hundred and forty-four thousand square feet of cleanable space. This is October one of two thousand twenty-three through September thirty-two thousand twenty-four. Renewable for four additional years in one-year increments upon approval of both parties. It is a recommendation of the management and finance committee that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to approve the proposal from ABM Industry Groups for, for RFP twenty-one, twenty-three dash one twenty-nine, housekeeping services for a base year amount of seven hundred ninety-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and a total estimated expenditure of four million three hundred thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars, including the renewal options through two thousand twenty-eight, and I would so move.
Second?
Motion's been made by trustee Muesel and seconded by trustee Hamel. Any discussion? Will this include replacing soap that always seems to be empty in bathrooms? No?
I am convinced that the soap is included in that bid.
Okay.
I don't know that they do the cleaning services, but we'll make sure you have soap.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions or comments, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Trustee Muesel.
The next item is our annual bid. Well, this is a multi-year purchase for charter bus services, primarily for our athletic teams, but also for other student services for special events throughout the year that require charter transportation. The contract will be from August one, two thousand twenty-three, through July thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four. Again, renewable in one-year increments for an additional four years upon the approval of both parties. The pricing listed is specific to the athletics department, and the annual cost varies on the athletics regular and postseason games. How far we go, how far away the national tournament is, those types of things, can affect this amount. It is a recommendation of management and finance committee that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to approve the proposal from Windstar Lines for an estimated base, base year of two hundred and twenty-two thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars. I would so move.
I'll second.
Motion's been made by trustee Muesel and seconded by trustee Ingram. Any discussion? Trustee Hamel.
Sure, one of the things that I found interesting about this, this was not necessarily the lowest bid, but this one has Wi-Fi, and I believe in the past we haven't had Wi-Fi on the bus, as I understand. This will allow students coming and going to continue working on their homework, things like that, while they're traveling to and from tournaments.
That's a good point.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, if the locations are fun, do trustees get a seat on these charter buses?
I, I would think not. I was hoping we would buy one and just rent out it for parties.
Yeah. That'd be a good option.
Do you know if that was considered?
Party bus, I understand.
We specifically rejected your idea.
At any rate, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
And those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Trustee Muesel.
The final item for action for the management and finance committee is the renewals for our master property insurance program services. The recommendation is to go with Alliant Insurance Services. As I mentioned earlier, we didn't, we have an appraisal of all the property on campus, which increased the valuation, which means your insurance coverage needs to go up. That, along with the insurance companies, or the insurance industries increasing costs, required us to add a significant amount above the original base amount. So it is a recommendation of the management and finance committee that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to approve the first renewal option for Alliant Insurance Services for an additional one hundred and sixty-two thousand six hundred and six dollars above the original base amount of four hundred and sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and one dollars for master property insurance program services for a total amount, basically total premium, of six hundred and thirty-one thousand three hundred and seven dollars through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four, and I would so move.
Second?
Motion's been made by trustee Muesel and seconded by trustee Hamel. Any discussion here? And we'll just note that that's a tough break for Marsh. Is it Marsh? Who had the low bid there?
The low off.
Yeah. The, the bids are, are based on what we did a year ago, right? When we established the contract with four one-year renewals. Because of the change in the amount of appraised value we have on, on campus and the insurance industry pricing increases, we have increased the renewal amount by the one hundred and sixty-two thousand six hundred and six dollars.
Right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
That's enough, I'm done. Thank you.
You mean that in more ways than one. Thank you, trustee Muesel. The next item on our agenda is the president's recommendation for action, and we'll begin tonight with the treasurer's report, and it'll be made by trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The treasurer's report can be found on pages forty-eight to fifty-nine of your packet and include the month ended May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. So during the month of May, the college made payments totaling one hundred and thirty-three thousand five hundred dollars on the series twelve, twenty-twelve and twenty-nineteen revenue bonds. An avalorum tax distribution of forty-seven million was received from Johnson County in June and will be included in next month's report. Expenditures in the primary operating funds are within approved budgetary limits. And, Mr. Chairman, I, as a recommendation of the college administration that the board of trustees approve the treasurer's report for the month ended May twenty twenty-three, subject to audit.
Second?
Motion's been made by trustee Smith Everett and seconded by trustee Muesel. Any discussion or questions for trustee Smith Everett? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the treasurer's report, please signify by saying yes.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. And now I will turn it over to Dr. Bound for his monthly report to the board.
All right. Trustee Cross, trustees, happy to provide my monthly report, and we'll jump right in. In this report to you, I'll, as I started doing last month, I highlight, highlights from the monthly campus update. We want to just talk quickly about the relocation of the board meetings starting this fall. We'll look at enrollment. And then I want to walk you through this past fiscal years, student success metrics, or key performance indicators, as we call them. So with that, I'm going to jump right in. You know, as I looked at, reviewed the, the monthly update from across campus, there were a number of things that jumped to my attention. First of all, I looked to our procurement team and the work that they've done. They've partnered with Metropolitan Community College in a matchmaker event, which is about increasing awareness of the opportunities to bid on work at Johnson County Community College. Again, it's in an effort to increase the understanding of the opportunities and the readiness for businesses across the community to be able to engage in that process. So thank you to the team. Secondly, I looked to our mission continuity, risk management, and our crisis management teams and the offices and the work that's happened in the month of June. As you've heard over time, and as demonstrated day in and day out by our teams across campus, the seriousness with which we take our work around disaster recovery and emergency management. We've gone through two tabletop exercises in the month of June to test our systems and to increase our readiness on those unfortunate circumstances where they may need to actually take official action. The crisis management drill also included several community partners, including the Overland Park Police Department, Johnson County Emergency Management, Overland Park Emergency Management, and the Overland Park Fire Department. So again, working through with community partners, even in tabletop exercises, increases your readiness for that unfortunate event or set of events, should they happen. And again, these are all part of our work around keeping our people safe. Third, we have begun the time of year when we go through our mandatory training as a college. And one of the pieces that was redone, components that was redone, is our Alice training. As Alisa Pacer does for us each and every meeting, or someone from emergency management does, with each meeting, we talk about our Alice response, and this is the part of the required training. And so I want to say thank you to our emergency management and our staff development teams for redoing that. It, we have said, thank you so much to the Western video that we've used for a number of years. It's true. And it was the work of a great team that's now taken us to the next round of, of training materials. As you saw, if you, in looking through the report, the new orientation, new student orientation activity continues to increase significantly. The amount of engagement of students, future students, during our period of two thousand nineteen to where we are today, increased by forty-one, almost forty-two percent, which is a tremendous amount of work that they've done. And then finally, our academic support functions continue to do amazing work in supporting our students for all of their needs related to academic success. And so I want to say thank you to those teams for the incredibly important work that they do. Next, as you are well aware, every time you walk in this building, you know we're in the midst of a construction project here on, in the GEB building. And so that will impact us, as we've talked about in the past. But we anticipate, starting with the September board meeting, we will be moving that to WCMT one eleven. And so we'll, we'll go into more details as we get closer to that time. In fact, if we want, we can do a, a trip over there, and you can see the facilities, whether we do that as a full board or we can do that in our individual meetings, we'll, we'll work through that. But wanting you to know, starting in September, our board and committee meetings will be held there. As a, a reminder and to, for information for the community, we will be increasing the size of the gallery, if you will, for the audience to be there, so that we will have more seating for in-person participation than what we have in this space. But one of the, the effects of that is we don't have the technology in that room that we will have in this room. So the ability to stream, live stream, will no longer be the case for that period that we're in that space. However, we will continue to record the meetings and make them available to watch after the fact, so you can be in-person for meetings or for our board meetings. They will be recorded as we have done prior to COVID. In addition, our offices, the president's office, along with the provost's office and the finance and administrative services office will be relocating temporarily to the comm. building in room three nineteen. It is tucked away. It's, the visibility goes down significantly in that space. But in order to do the renovations that happen in this space, the expansion of the boardroom and the, and then the impact on the surrounding space, meaning the president's office and the Lidl conference room, as that goes through, that, that's why we're relocating the board meetings, and that's why we'll be relocating our offices. The anticipation is that would be September through March, and we'll know more as the progress, the, the project continues. So, all right? For your information, for the public's information.
Now, is Tom going to personally come find us when we're lost and take us to the right place? Or do we have, have we?
Whether or not it's Tom, we will absolutely meet you where you are, just as we do our students. We will meet you where you are to where you want to go.
Excellent.
Absolutely. All right. Let's begin to look at, then, enrollment. Again, we are still well within the summer enrollment period, why, excuse me, the summer training period, delivery period for our continuing ed and workforce development programs, non-credit programs, if you will, where the summer term on the credit side is wrapping up shortly. But again, their enrollment, CE's enrollment for the summer continues to be very strong. Keep in mind, over the last, last year and a half or so, there was federal COVID relief funding that was available to help, and, and that went away during this year. And so to see enrollment growth means that our team is working really hard to meet the needs of our community. So looking strong from a summer standpoint. Fall, again, we're up. It's really early in the process for fall for our continuing ed. So yes, it's up over last year, and it's up over the fall of twenty-one. But there's a lot of, of the year left to go. So we'll just leave it at that for now, unless there are any questions on the continuing ed side. Okay? On the credit side for fall enrollment, fall continues to look strong. This is about the time of year where we have a pretty good sense of what fall semester is likely to look like, plus or minus, I think John would say, plus or minus a percent-ish. But, you know, certainly not from a numbers, raw numbers standpoint, number of students, number of credit hours. But in terms of trend and percentage-wise, we've got a pretty good look at what fall is likely to look like, then at this point, being two-point-seven percent up in headcount and four-point-one percent in credit hours. Again, for the community, two points, the headcount drives service that we provide to students on campus, and the credit hours is what drives the budget side, the financial side of serving students the way we do. Any questions related to that? You also have the detailed report in front of you.
Would I be?
Yep. Yes.
Would I be speaking there? Let's see if I can sum this page up.
Yep.
Interpretation. We have a really flat amount of students coming back, but they're taking more credit hours. Would that be accurate?
I, I would, given where we've been in recent years.
I know, three percent.
It, that's a noticeable increase.
Students coming back, but, but.
They're taking more credit.
They're taking more credits per, okay.
Yes, yes.
They're upselling it.
Yeah, we're upselling at the door. Do you need another credit? And another, great.
Do you want a cookie?
Yeah.
All right. Again, enrollment's looking strong. I thank the team for that. There's a tremendous amount of work. There is a tremendous amount of work that happens between now and the start of the semester to get students in, get them registered for class, get them processed from a financial aid standpoint, and get them set up to be successful. And this is now to the listening audience. If you haven't registered for your classes for fall, this is the time to do it. The longer you wait, the less likely you are to get what you want, when you want it. And so this is the time to get in here and, and keep moving forward. So, all right. What I'd like to do now is walk you through the metrics from a student success standpoint, looking at this past fiscal year. So from a student success standpoint, when we look at course success rates, again, these are students that earn an ABC or pass the class, a passing grade allocation. And again, we improved to eighty percent, and we met the target this past year. In the upcoming committee meetings in the month of August, we'll spend more time looking into the, the targets as we look to this year, looking at, but to give you an indication of where we think we need to go from an administration standpoint, we see, you know, a short-term gain and then a bigger long-term stretch goal that moves us closer to the ninetieth percentile nationally. Secondly, when we look at the key performance indicator of fall to spring retention, you've seen these numbers before. This is last fall to this past. This is last fall to this past spring. Again, we've seen gains in both our full-time students as well as our part-time students. And yet, you can see that we still have a ways to go from a target standpoint, both in terms of the short term and definitely in terms of the long term. But again, moving in the right direction. Fall-to-fall retention, so this is, you've also seen this number, these two slides or these two charts before, in that fall, you're seeing the fall, if you look at the fall '21, that's the cohort that we have the most recent data of because you're tracking fall '21 to fall '22. We did dip slightly on the full-time student rate, but have noticeable gains on the part-time student fall-to-fall retention rates. In addition, if we look at success rates, so this is either completion or transfer, right? Some students come to us and earn the associate degree and transfer on. Some students come to us, earn the associate degree. Some students come to us, or certificate, and/or some students come to us, don't earn the credential here, but transfer on to another education partner. We saw a dip, actually, we remain flat this year. We saw a dip a year ago, or in the previous year. And from a success rate for our part-time students, again, this held flat compared to a year ago. Then if we look at our certificates, this is our non-credit success rates, if you will, or numbers. We're looking at students that, on the non-credit side, either earned a certificate or a certification. That's the completion side of things there. We knew coming into this year that because of the federal stimulus dollars that went in and were applied to non-credit training in the previous 18 months, that that would have an impact from a completion standpoint this year because there wasn't the funding that came with it. As of today, and we had just over 2,700 completions, which were, but we've still got, because we are in the middle of CDL training and so forth, that fits within this category. It'll be September before we have a good sense of exactly what that is. But we do know that the number exceeded the target that had been set. And then finally, if we look at employment, for those who are in our current technical education programs, employment in the region, the number dipped a little this past year to 87% from the 89% the year before. But all in all, those are strong numbers compared to where we would expect to be when you look at where other community colleges are and so forth. So, those are the student success metrics as we track them today. Any questions?
Trustee Muso.
Well, this is a freakish unicorn opportunity for John or his group to measure because of the influx of federal money, because of the pandemic. We know how much we received and we know how much we increased our completion of non-credit certificates. Is somebody, I assume somebody's putting that together in some type of an analytical fashion? Because when we tell legislators, if you gave us more money, we would do X, we're usually projecting it.
Good point.
Now, we have an example, whether it's federal money or state money or whatever, of how many more certificates we were able to get people in here and get them to complete because we had funding. So, it seems like it's an opportunity to look backwards and find out some support instead of always just projecting it to the future. Does that, I don't know if that makes sense, but it's, we're not going to have this again. Well, I don't know if I want to knock on wood for the federal funding or knock on wood for pandemic. But this is an opportunity to take a unique circumstance with unique one-time money and demonstrate what we can do with it when we get it.
Well.
We don't want to miss it.
And to that point, I think when we have our federal, local, our federal elected officials come to visit campus, the opportunity to reiterate that and say how, how many people we served when we had more money. I'm not, don't always love earmarking, but now in this role, I see some benefit to those types of things where then you can say, we can serve more people if the federal government does their part to help, same with the state level. And all the ways that we interact with those communities of people, saying that this was really powerful and look how, what the numbers were, yeah, it's a great thing.
And again, this is where I, you know, I really credit Alyssa Waldman and her team. And then the cabinet and others across the college, and eventually your support as well to allocate those federal dollars to provide short-term training opportunities for folks that needed it. And so, it was a good strategic move on the part of our team here at the college. And I want to say thank you for, you know, bringing this forward as an opportunity for the ways that we can serve our community well. And it did. It had a direct benefit. We received this, we invested it in this way, and we could have invested in lots of ways because those were resources that we had as a college, where the college had the discretion to use them in some way that was COVID relief-oriented. And so, it was, that's a point well taken.
I will say, we get copies of everything we just saw?
Yeah.
We'll ask if I may.
You've got it. Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Then thank you to the federal delegation, because I know Senator Moran has been a steadfast ally, has ordered the college and the community college movement. Senator Marshall's here this year.
Mm-hmm.
And I know Representative Davids was here.
Mm-hmm. They've all visited, yeah?
Yeah.
So, to your point, Trustee Smith, ever, like, you know, it's critical. I think we're seeing for the value of the community college movement and the wide array of things that we offer. So.
And to piggyback on that, too, I had just mentioned to Dr. Baum that one of the things that we discussed at our last KACC meeting, I want to say KACC-T, I have a struggle with that. But anyway, at that meeting was that this is such a good time to bring in our local and Kansas folks. So, to take advantage of that and not necessarily wait until December, when we're kind of used to inviting them here on campus. So, I would just reiterate that.
Absolutely. Yep, thank you. It's a good point.
Well, there, and Mr. Carter left, but there are, there's an interim committee on workforce, I believe. Is there a legislative committee that?
I think so.
It would be nice if we could submit some testimony or something.
Mm-hmm.
In fact, for this.
Yep.
Well, I just, I really appreciate you bringing that up, Trustee Muso. I think it's a really good point, and thank you for doing that. That's awesome. Take advantage of that.
I want to tell you, Marvin Gaye said T stands for trouble, so we should get rid of it.
KACC-T.
Any other questions, concerns, Dr. Baum?
I'll translate for.
Thank you.
I just, in closing, want to say thank you to the team. A lot of work goes in, right?
Sure, then I can follow.
Between faculty and staff and serving students to increase. Yes, we look at it in terms of metrics, but the reality is, it's effort that takes place in every classroom, that takes place online, that takes place in every office across campus of us pulling together to meet students, to address the needs that they have, to help them be successful, to lift them up when they need to be lifted up, to challenge them when they need to be challenged, and to bring that together with, with high expectations and high support to help them be successful. And I want to say thank you to the team for the work that you're doing and day in and day out. And I know we're wrapping up summer term, and for many of our faculty, they get a little respite here. And so, thank you for the work that you've done over the summer, the work that you're doing in preparation for this next fall, and for our staff who have been steadfast throughout the year in moving us quickly towards the start of fall semester. And we'll have more to provide of an update in terms of fall readiness at our next meeting. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions, any other questions or comments for Dr. Baum?
I just had a brief comment.
Trustee.
We've talked a lot about the student success, which is very important information. But I also wanted to draw attention back to the, the training that's being done in the area of crisis management. The importance of that and what Alyssa and her team are doing can't be understated. You know, I know from my law enforcement background that in a crisis situation, if people are not trained, you have panic and chaos. And if they are trained, it's kind of like when our kids, when they were little, brought home the little sheet where you had to learn how to, you know, get out of the house if there's a fire. And that kind of stuff is incredibly important. And it's unfortunate that we live in a society where we have to be prepared for crises like Alice is intended to confront, but, but we do. And so, I want to commend Alyssa and her team for, for those efforts and making sure that we're ready if the worst happens.
Thank you.
I want to add, I know I've said this before, I just enjoy repeating myself. I went to a conference in Portland in 2016, and the staff had given me one of those emergency booklets we have, this folder, books. And I whipped that out in a meeting of trustees only after, it was after the Umpqua shooting in 2015. And I, I pulled that out and everybody's eyes got real big and they're like, where did you get that? I'm like, oh, we have them. Our administration produces them. And it was passed around and people took note of what we do and the resources we have. And we're lucky to be in a federal city and to have the resources we do.
Yes.
I concur with Trustee Ray.
We've talked a fair amount of.
No, go ahead.
We've talked also a fair amount about COVID and COVID relief funding. I'm reminded of the fact that from a continuity planning standpoint, mission continuity standpoint, if I understand correctly, prior to COVID, we had just in the months before, COVID directly impacted our nation and this campus, you know, specifically, we had gone through the continuity planning work that helped prepare our readiness for that exact situation. So, whether it's a, an acute crisis of a moment or, you know, a pandemic, we need to be ready. And I, I thank our team for the seriousness with which they approached this.
And that would include Dr. Saltchek and?
Absolutely.
Chief Gregory.
Absolutely, absolutely it would. Yes.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Mr. Chair, the only other thing I was going to say is you mentioned.
You're so close to me, I don't see you when you do this.
Don't tempt me. The only other thing that I was going to say is you suggested that we would be bringing this up further in student success, so we will look forward to that, just a little more in-depth of what we'd like to share. So, thank you.
I was actually being serious. I'm not, like, I'm looking.
You need a?
Are you finished?
I am done.
Very much done.
The next item on our agenda is new business. Is there any new business for the good of the order, fellow trustees? Seeing none, I'll move on to the next item, to old business. Do we have any old business to take care of? I believe so. The consent agenda is our next item. And I will note that in consultation with Dr. Baum, I've decided to pull the affiliation, articulation, reverse transfer cooperative and other agreements at page 64. We're pulling those because they need consideration at a future date. With that said, so number four, 11A4, has been removed at the discretion of the chair. If I could have a motion to approve the consent agenda as a whole, I would invite that motion, please.
So moved.
Mr. Chair, can you clarify one more time what you're striking? Sorry, I was, I had the old one pulled up and I know we've revised it, so I need to go back and.
Sure, we've had some questions and concerns about item 11A4 at page 64 of the board packet. And in consultation with Dr. Baum and myself, we've decided to pull that at this time for consideration. We'll be back in front of the board for consideration at a future date, but it's 11A4.
Thank you.
The affiliation, articulation, reverse transfer cooperative and other agreements. And I'm just saying that to make it clear.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So, the motion has been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
I believe Trustee Ingram moved and Trustee Ray making an appearance tonight. Seconds. Any, any other discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing, hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. At this point, I do believe we have one executive session scheduled.
Correct.
I thought it was four.
Don't tempt fate.
My apologies. I did say that out loud, I apologize.
So, I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the people to be in discussed. No action will be taken during the session, and the executive session will last for 45 minutes, beginning at? 6:50?
Five minutes.
And ending at, I'm bad at math, at 7:35? At which time, open session will resume at this same location in person and by Zoom video conference. It's possible Trustee Ratan may join us, yet upon information and belief, so we're leaving that option open. We would like to invite Dr. Andrew Baum and Mrs. Kelsey Nizar to join in the executive session. May I please have such a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Trustee Ingram and seconded by Trustee Smith Everett. We will see you back here at 7:30.
See the vote.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll move to executive session. And we're back after an executive session. We all ate sandwiches and we're prepared to adjourn now. If I could have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, excuse me, the motion's been made by Trustee Ingram and seconded by Trustee Hamel.
There was no action taken.
There was no action taken, yeah.
Yeah. During executive session.
Is that all I'm supposed to say? Okay. All those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. We're adjourned.